Very good. So all those in favor, well, do we need to discuss? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of electing Commissioner Kenny as the next Planning Commission Vice Chair, say aye.
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 Very good. All those opposed, say nay. Very good. At this point, I would like to turn the meeting over to Chair Ortiz Pino to take over. But before doing so, I would like to express my gratitude to Commissioner Martin for serving for the last decade on the Planning Commission. You've been an immense value to this group and certainly have helped shape the city in the direction it's heading. So thank you for your time and we really appreciate your participation.
Thank you. And you were a great president for a year. Congratulations. You get to move on now.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Turning it over to you, Chair.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Call for the next item, number three, of an approval of the legal action report for December 18th, 2024. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Okay, looks like we have approval. Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and move forward and call the next item, number four, Community Corridors Tool, UDC Code Amendment and Study Session. Would Seth please provide their presentation?
Excellent. Thank you, Commission. Appreciate it. So this is the Community Corridors Tool and EV Charging UDC Amendment. This is a continued study session. So we had the study session back in December. And we're coming back to kind of expand upon kind of our presentation previously, provide a little more clarity, and have an additional discussion related to this. See if this works. Excellent. Great. So with this, so this is an amendment that would add Section 5.1511 to the Community Corridors Tool, to Article Five of the Unified Development Code. So staff has been working under the direction of Mayor and Council to develop citywide zoning tool to enable the redevelopment of underutilized sites along the city's commercial corridors. This is here to encourage more construction, in addition to focused on really aligning the development code with adopted city policy. So the goals here are fairly simple related to this. It's really to make infill, especially affordable housing, easier to build on our corridors. We wanted to, you know, it was a little while back and there was a big discussion, we just want to kind of go over some of the kind of principles of this prior to getting into some of the feedback and things of that sort related to it. It is also here to remove, we're goals to remove barriers to attainable housing, promote transit-oriented and pedestrian-oriented infill development that supports our climate action goals. It's intended to update zoning, to make it easier to permit a full spectrum of housing types, and to ultimately just simplify the redevelopment of underutilized and vacant sites along our corridors, especially, you know, looking at parking lots and those sites that we really have seen vacant for a long time. So this comes from Mayor and Council direction and really policy direction that we've had for the last 20 or so years. But related to this specific project, it really began back in February 22nd, 2023, where we held a study session on the recommendations from the Commission on Equitable Housing that was related to specific recommendations on regulatory changes to incentivize affordable housing via our zoning code. We also held a study session on April 18th, 2023, on the tools for the redevelopment of underutilized sites. This is really the bulk of what you have in front of you. At that meeting, we had a lot of discussion related to just kind of looking at our commercial corridors, our declining commercial areas, vacant sites, especially parking. There was a big presentation on parking. I think there was a video that Donald Shoup had put together for that, and those recommendations to move forward and look at ways that we can really spur on redevelopment of those sites. There was a third study session as well on August 8th that really talked about tiny homes. It was all things tiny homes. It was like, you know, tiny homes on wheels, as well as shelter care, as well as kind of just small homes. There's portions of that that have been rolled into this as well. And then we held a study session on October 17th, really to kind of bring that all together. We presented Mayor and Council with a work plan. From there, they kind of told us to move forward and we spent the next eight months or so really doing analysis. We held, we conducted six site scenarios to really learn about our zoning code. We did an economic analysis. We held some focus groups that really informed kind of what those barriers are and informed the proposal that's in front of you. We held public meetings based on that, some of those kind of things that came out of that back in August last year. And that led to a couple more study sessions in the fall with additional direction from Mayor and Council to continue with what we were looking at. So really what we have in front of us is not only that Mayor and Council direction, but there is a lot of policy direction that we had over the last really 10-plus years. So looking at the policy direction in a lot of these plans was really the foundation for what you have in front of you. So looking at Plan Tucson, Move Tucson, Tucson Resilient Together, as well as looking at all of the feedback that we received as we developed our overlays, but also really looking at the overlays and learning from those. What we found when we started doing that analysis and looking at all those policies is that there really was this misalignment between what we said we wanted with our policy documents and really what our zoning code was providing, at least in those areas with our kind of general zoning code regulations. We have developed tools over the last, you know, 10 years or so to really start to address those, but they're only in specific geographic areas. They aren't being applied really outside of our overlay districts or some of our planned area developments. It'll eventually go. There we go. So when we did that review, it really started, we really looked at it and started to realize that it was prioritizing a lot of development types that, again, were not being in either, you know, we are not seeing from our zoning code or really we're not able to be developed with our zoning code. So looking at things like, you know, policies related to mixes of uses and connecting streets, making them walkable and easy to walk and safe. Looking at, you know, single-family lots with front porches instead of having, you know, driveways and garages in the front. Looking at buildings with active ground floors, wide sidewalks with trees, you know, more pedestrian-friendly streets, like in having townhomes, and even just buildings that are close to the street. These are all things that our zoning code really wasn't encouraging or wasn't producing when people would come in and want to redevelop. What we did see is that the development that is allowed by our code by right generally is very auto-centric and leads to a lot of things that are really not supported necessarily by our policies. So a lot of drive-throughs, a lot of buildings that are being set back that have no actual relationship to the street, parking in front of them, or even just poor access to those areas. Lack of shade in a lot of cases, and a lot of parking that leads to increased heat, increased stormwater runoff. Again, a lot of things that are not supported by a lot of these newer policy documents that we've developed. So we did want to go back and talk a little bit about some of the things that we're really trying to get at here. And one is, yes, we're looking at infill development that's transit-oriented and pedestrian-oriented. But really, one of the big things here, and it started with the affordable housing, but it really is addressing housing issues within the city of Tucson. And so we conducted, you know, there was a state bill, State Bill 1162, that required us to do a housing needs assessment this last year. We finished, we finalized it back in December. And we wanted to just kind of show you the current state of housing in the city of Tucson to give you an understanding of really why something like this is important and why it really is a priority of Mayor and Council. And so on the left here, it really shows this 10-year estimate of housing need for the city of Tucson. So this talks about a 10-year estimate. In the report that you have in front of you, it's over 8,000 units that we currently have a need for that we don't have in the city of Tucson. So we're already at a deficit of over 8,000 units in the city. Half of that's about for homelessness need, and the other half is just due to underproduction. When you look at this, this is basically saying that over the next 10 years, in order to keep up with demand, we need to have over 35,000 units developed in the city of Tucson. What's really interesting about this is kind of where those units are, where the need is actually within those units. So if you look at this chart on the right-hand side, you have on the left-hand side, and in the bottom, the affordability, two-thirds of that is 0% to 30% area median income, or 30% to 60% area median income. So that is what we pretty much know as subsidized affordable housing. So that's a lot of the stuff that you see Housing and Community Development do. Those are a lot of the low-income housing tax credits that we see come through. Those are generally 100% affordable projects. And they really rely on federal assistance in order to subsidize that. On the right-hand side, however, you'll see almost all of the future need beyond that that we have is all within 120% AMI and higher. And so what you end up with here is basically that we're seeing most of the demand that's coming into the market and we will see in the market is really market rate and higher. And what ends up happening is, a lot of times, and we've seen this recently, is you have in migration, a lot of times that ends up being people who have higher purchasing power than the existing population, potentially higher wages. And if they don't have that supply, they don't have the market rate housing that's there for them, they end up purchasing up the stuff in the middle that might be more affordable, that would generally be available for people who may not have the purchasing power of them. So if you don't produce the actual stuff on the right-hand side, it starts to affect everywhere else in the market all the way down. So pretty much what it shows us here is that we need both, you know, affordable, we need both capital A affordable housing, subsidized affordable housing, but it's a problem even beyond that to where we really need to produce market rate housing in order to kind of reduce some of those pressures that are occurring on the naturally occurring affordable housing, which is the stuff that's already there. So this right here is just kind of another, kind of another example of really the affordability issues that we're seeing within the city of Tucson. And so this comes from the Peachet Plan by Housing and Community Development. And it looks at what annual salary you need in order to afford a different, a certain type of house, or average type of house. So it's looking at studios, one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, threes and fours. And it's the top five jobs or the most kind of common jobs within the city of Tucson. Two of those can't afford a one-bedroom home. And then if you look at it, four of those can't afford a two-bedroom home. So again, showing you that, you know, the affordability issues that we have currently in the city related to this and the reason why we really need to address not just that subsidized affordable housing, but in general, all housing and housing issues within the city. So I want to talk a little bit about that, but I also want to talk about barriers to development because some of the issues that we're currently seeing as far as that overall affordability, especially really since, you know, 2008, we really haven't built back at the rate that we were previously, is really just barriers to development and why we're not seeing the type of development that's keeping up with the increase in population within the city of Tucson. And so this looks at really development cost. And we understand, you know, this is a zoning proposal and a zoning proposal can only do so much. There are market issues, there's, you know, cost of labor, there's cost of land, there's cost of money that's also a factor, like just the fact that when interest rates go up, it makes money more expensive, it makes it more challenging, right? But the things that are within our control, at least within this, a lot of times is related to zoning. And this chart here shows really, you know, that portion, that gray portion there are, you know, soft costs and a large portion of that is related to zoning and the process to get entitlements in order to develop. So it says here, you know, regulations imposed by all levels of government account for an average of 40.6% of multifamily development cost. So it can actually be very large portions of it. And so again, working at ways to try to reduce some of those over time is really important at addressing those barriers. So we do have some tools that help with development of multifamily development and multifamily housing. And so this map on the right-hand side And so this map on the right-hand side shows really the multifamily development that has occurred in the city of Tucson in the last 10 years. And what's really interesting about this chart is that it shows 56% of all of the multifamily development that was, that was developed in the city of Tucson was developed within either the influence incentive district or one of our urban overlays. That's less than 5% of the area of the city. Another 44% were developed outside of the influence incentive district or our urban overlays. But what's interesting about that as well, so that's only 44% is developed outside of that area that's smaller than 5%. But what's also interesting about this is that when you start to look at those, those purple dots is that those, almost all of them are planned area developments. And so there is the bridges that's up there, there's the landing, that's the one that's at I-19 in Irvington. Benedict Dean's on there as well, that's one of the bigger dots. So you're seeing most of the multifamily development occur either within our influence incentive district, our urban overlays or our planned area developments. This is a perfect indication of, of really showing us that our current code and our zoning code is not functioning at a, in a way that's actually producing the housing that we need in order to move forward. Another reason why it's really important to really make zoning reform in order to actually try to address some of these issues. So again, we do have some zoning tools, but again, they're either geographically specific or they require a site-specific solution like a planned area development. There we go. So we've learned a lot from both of those things, right? Our planned area developments, we've learned a lot from our, our urban overlay districts, our influence incentive district. So from there, because a lot of those are based off of kind of, you know, solutions that require you to come in and request reductions and things, we've noticed that there are certain things that are really large barriers within our zoning code. We've learned a lot from this. First one is just parking requirements. And this is something that we've seen all over the country. It's not just in Tucson, but parking requirements and requiring too much parking is increased cost. It's decreased efficiency of land. It also has a lot of negative kind of climate impacts related to heat, related to stormwater runoff for that. Building height maximums, this was another one that we've learned from. Modern building practices along with our zoning code, not keeping up with them is a problem. We have a C1 zone that at one point allowed for three-story buildings, it's 30 feet. You can't fit a 30-story building in, in a, or you can't fill a three-story building in a 30-foot building height. Same thing happens with our C2 zone. Our C2 zone is 40 feet. You can't really fit a four-story building in a 40-foot building height limit. So, but when we did our, our, our economic analysis, basically the sweet spot is at four stories. And that's part of the reason why when you start to look at your code, you see that's where we've actually tailored the building height within this in order to meet that. So if our most prevalent commercial zones, C1, C2, and our office zones and our R3 zones, none of them allow for you to get to four stories. That's part of the reason that we're see, that we're not really seeing a lot of multifamily housing. Because really, if you look at our market, a four-story building is pretty much the most, one of the few things that's actually market feasible. Density and lock, lock coverage regulations, our lock coverage is pretty generous. So it has some issues, but it's pretty generous in the city of Tucson, 70% or more for almost every zone. Density is a barrier and it's a barrier in a couple of ways. One is that if you have too low of a density requirement, especially in multifamily, you end up with units that are larger than you need. The developer will come in and they'll maximize at three and four bedroom units and you won't get what the community might need, which especially with demographic changes, our studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, et cetera. And you get a better mix of, of, of units if you don't have density calculations or they're too low. Setbacks, we have significant setbacks in certain places. You'll see this later when we look at it, things that are one and a half times the building height, two times the building height, as well as a lot of, a lot of setbacks in the front that also tend to push the building back and create issues. We fixed some of those when we came through before, this helps with some of that as well. Split zoning, all of our quarters have, not all of our quarters, many of our quarters have commercial and then they have residential behind it. This makes it very, very challenging because you can't utilize any of that residential portion for any of the, anything related to the commercial uses on the front. This was something that was changed 30 or so years ago in our zoning code. And you'll see a lot of vacant and under, under and unused areas along our commercial quarters because of it. You also have to setback from those residential portions too, which also make it more and more challenging for that. And then discretionary processes, these are, these lead to less predictability for both the community and for, for people who are trying to develop multifamily housing or housing. And they add time and cost related to that. So we wanted to show kind of an example of how this works. We brought this to you last time. So Housing and Community Development is looking at redevelopment of the Amazon Motel that is along Miracle Mile. You see on the right-hand side, there's an existing building and then there's kind of vacant portion on the left-hand side. For this, it is a C2 lot, it is MH1. And the back portion, so it's split zoned as well. So it's a pretty good example of kind of a lot of those issues that we've seen as far as barriers go. So the base zoning doesn't allow for much. So there's limitations on this by one, just overall building height. It only allows for 40 feet because it's in C2 in the front portion. And then you have that split zoning portion, which doesn't allow for you to do much with it. It also has setback issues, it has parking issues and really limits it to another 30 units. It's basically saying that you can do about 30 units or more, more on this. What ends up happening with this is that, you know, this is a project that is looking to get low income housing tax credits. And in order to do so, you really need to make a case for, for getting those tax credits to where you're providing the benefit. And you really can't get enough units onsite to get a, a good enough project to get it approved for those. So what happens? Oh, it didn't show up right. Anyways, so the graphics should be clear, but it's not and I apologize. So, so what happens when the underlying zoning doesn't particularly work? You have to look for other options, right? So you look for potentially going through and rezoning your site. You could look to see if there's an optional, like an optional overlay, like an urban overlay district, like Grant Road overlay, influence incentive district. And then as of now, you don't have the option on the far right for the community quarters tool. But each of these have, you know, benefits and benefits to them, but they also have potential challenges. Rezoning, it takes eight to 12 months potentially for rezoning. If you wanted to go through and change to a pad or something of that sort in order to do so, you have to go through the public process for it, makes it really challenging, especially with LIHTC grants. There are very tight timelines and you have to have your zoning in place in order to get approval. So if you don't have that zoning in place, probably you're waiting an entire year to go through the process, get it in place, spend a bunch of money on it as well. And then in order to just get to that point to where you can actually get the project approved. Optional overlay, there's no overlays on Miracle Mile related to this. If there were, such as if you know of the Malagro on Oracle, that one actually utilized the Grant Road overlay. It was a little challenging because of the fact that there is still a process there and the timing was, was hard to do, but they were able to get that approval prior to going through. But a lot of times that can take up six months in order to get that approval. So if you're trying to move quickly and get an application in, it could make, it could cause some challenges. There's also not much, not a lot of predictability in either of those first two. So you really have to get that approval prior. You can't go through and, and speculate about getting the approval because your design could change as you're going through for that. So this is just kind of an example of, of what, you know, that planned area development, rezoning process could potentially be, walking through kind of from the start of the rezoning process, really through, through eventual approval for that. So rezoning, again, eight to 12 months can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then design review as well, six to eight month process potentially to get through that. So what does that look like if you potentially have the community corridors option? So this is another one, so it comes in, again, base zoning on the left-hand side, another 30 units or so that you can get. What's interesting about the, you have a height limit of 30 feet, you could potentially put three stories there. But because of the parking, because of the setbacks, because of everything that goes along with it, you can really only get an extra 30 feet, 30, 30 units and about 25 feet. Right-hand side really shows how you can, how you can start to get more units onsite. So 124 units, they're only looking at doing about 84, so not, not maximizing out or anything there. But what it would allow for in that C2 portion, instead of 40 feet, which was originally intended to be four stories, you would get 60 feet or five stories. And you could potentially get another additional building story for providing affordable housing. And that's how you'd get up to that six stories there for it. In the back portion, because it's MH1, and this is part of the kind of transitioning into existing areas, is that those split zone portions, while you can utilize them, they're still of less intensity. So the MH1 portion would be 25 feet. And then you could also do the incentive because it's affordable housing for another building height. So this shows you how the tool would be able to be utilized. And, you know, a project like this that might be on a tight timeline, they could potentially, you know, show they have zoning approval. So it immediately opens up a lot of options for affordable housing developers to have a pro, to, to, to have a, have parcels where they can have functional projects that they can apply for, for this, these monies and be able to develop them. There were questions about eligibility as well, and we wanted to just kind of talk a little bit about this. We went through and kind of based on some of the comments we heard from the commission, we went through and really mapped this. And I think, you know, once you start to map it, even though I know there's, there have been concerns about, you know, the applicability to the difference between arterials and collectors and whether it should be allowed on collectors. And so we wanted to just kind of run through a couple scenarios just to give you an understanding of really what is the actual applicability of this and how it functions. I think there's, you know, when you initially think it's every collector and arterial, you really think it's, it's, it has, maybe has more of an impact than it actually does. So this is looking at kind of midtown. If I had an actual pointer, I'd point this out, but starting at the top with the top circle, that's Glen, then Grant Road, then Pima and Speedway, and then north-south routes, all the way at the left-hand side is Tucson. And then in the middle, there's Columbus. And you start to look at those collectors, I mean, there's mostly commercial zones and our three zones, et cetera, that are, that are on our arterials. But when you look at those collectors, there's large portions of those that are not commercially zoned, office zoned or R3 zoned. And it generally only ends up at the intersections of either collectors and collectors or collectors and arterials. So the appropriate places, which is generally those nodes, would be those commercial nodes where there's already commercial activity there. So it's not going through and saying those existing residential areas that are along those collectors are going to be redeveloped. They're not eligible to be redeveloped via this tool. So we wanted to kind of point that out, just kind of how that works. This is another example as well, looking at kind of, this is an area where you have kind of prints to the top. And I think that's Grant at the bottom, but looking at, you know, looking at collectors such as Mountain, looking at, you know, Tucson Boulevard, looking at Glen, again, limited applicability along those collectors for that. Real quick, yes, Commissioner Martin?
I was just wondering if you looked at vacant R1 and R2 property when you did this, since that's eligible for the CCT?
We have, we have with some. I will say that the assessor's data is pretty spotty as far as what is vacant and what isn't. So that is, you know, we, we looked at it individually, but you know, we don't have that mapped because of that. But we did want to walk through a couple of quick sites to show you kind of what would be eligible and what wouldn't. So this is an example of a site that's, if you look at, it's west of, my eyes are bad. West of Wilmont and near Bellevue, it's just north of Speedway. This site is a vacant site that is, that is zoned R2. This site, because it does not have access and it's not a full site with the O3 and R3, R2 portions, would not be eligible to utilize this tool. So this is an example while it is, while it is a vacant site and it is surrounded by kind of other commercial areas for, for the most part, this would not be eligible to utilize this site. We were being very careful on, on creating a tool that really was intended to be utilized along the corridors and not one that would creep into existing development in existing neighborhoods. This is an example of a site, this is zoned RX2, this is on Fifth Street, this is east of Country Club. This site would not be eligible as well. So this site has existing homes on it, is also not one of the zones that is eligible. And in, in, in fact, all of this, all of those homes all along that quarter on the north side and the south side, even though Sixth or Fifth at this point is a, is a collector, none of those would be eligible to utilize this tool. This is a site on Mountain, is a vacant site at the corner of Mountain and Hampton. This site is within an NPZ. Even though it's vacant, it's within a neighborhood preservation zone, this site would not be eligible to utilize this tool. This site, so this site is on Fort Lowell. And I think it's Fort Lowell and Vine, I believe, Cherry, Cherry and Vine. And this site, while it is an R2, while it is an R2 zone, it would not be eligible because it's already built out as one. And two, because there's not continued access. If you wanted to develop that all as one, it would have to be one singular site and it isn't currently that. So this is another example of a site that would not be able to utilize this tool for that. So we just wanted to kind of talk through some of those, some of those things because I think there's, it's, it's a, it can get a little complex. And there are a lot of situations to where it isn't actually applicable that I think, you know, there is a misconception that it might be. So we also wanted to talk about kind of how it's drafted in a way that is contextually sensitive to existing areas. So this site right here is a site with, is a medium kind of commercial lot in an existing strip center that's a vacant, that's, and it has a vacant lot in back. It's about four acres, C1 in the front, R2 in the back. I do want to say that this is not an actual proposal, I want to make sure that that's very clear, that this is just looking at a site scenario and trying to get an understanding of what it is. So this site is located on two arterial streets. The R2 portion is not considered a part of this, of the site of C1. Currently, there's no shared parking or driveways, but the vacant portion allows for you to utilize this. Okay, so just to point out kind of some of the development standards for both the C1 portion and then the R2 portion and how that works. So C1 portion, there's street setbacks, you have six feet minimum, 30 feet maximum in the front. It allows for you to have kind of a public area in the front if you want, you know, some seating, but it's small enough so you can't actually put parking there for that. So it allows for some flexibility on that street portion. Side, side lot, you know, along quarters, zero feet. And then the rear without an alley would be 15 feet, so you'd have to set back 15 feet from that rear portion. And then if you're adjacent to R1, R2 or O1, you would have to set, you would have to set back those portions 10 feet. The max building height here is four stories or 50, and 50 feet. So you could go up to 50 feet, but it can only be four stories. You couldn't try to squeeze in five stories into the 50 feet. That makes a really awkward looking building and it's not good urban design. Maximum lot coverage, there isn't any maximum lot area. Generally what happens with those is that those are regulated by other things that you have. They're regulated by setbacks, they're regulated by open space requirements, they're regulated by landscape requirements. Those are all things that are built into this, that's the reason why you don't necessarily need lot coverage. A lot of times in our code, that's part of the, the barriers that we've had is that we layer on all of these different things. And even though you have 70% lot coverage, because you have all of these other requirements, you can really only fill up 20% of the lot, maybe a little more. Parking, it's dependent on the proposed use and what you're doing there. They would have to do a parking statement in order to kind of, you know, basically justify what they are proposing. They bring that into us and there are some additional uses that are allowed. So you could do alcoholic beverage service on this. You can also do some additional residential, residential uses as well. R2, the back portion of the site. So you'll have a street setback of 15 feet, normally it's 20 feet on an R2, for an R2. It's a little bit reduced for this, but not so much that it would be out of place with existing development. So that was the reason why we ended up at 15. Side, side setback would be zero and the rear and shared driveway would be zero. But, and then adjacent to C1, you'd have 10 feet. The max building height would be three stories on this portion for the R2 portion. And 30, actually it's 36 feet on that, but. And 30, actually, it's 36 feet on that, but we are doing 12 feet building heights. It's a small change that we made between last time and this time for that. Max lot coverage is 90%. Again, we have 90% in there, but again, it's regulated by all the other stuff anyways, so you're probably never going to get to 90%. Minimum lot size is 1,500 square feet. Parking, again, is part of that justification plan. But for the entire site, you do have a minimum of open space requirement. And because it's of a certain size, it would be 10% of the site. So you have to provide 10% open space with, if you were to develop this. So again, that's kind of how those, those, those standards would work for this. So we did do a opportunity site analysis of this, looking at this and how it might work. It's a mid-rise mixed-use building with a grocery store and retail spaces facing 22nd, 22nd Street, or the arterial street. Mix of townhomes and pedestrian and orphan spaces. And this ended up with 21, 21,000 square feet of commercial space in the front, on the bottom floor, 136 housing units. It does park at 187 parking spaces. We found that even without specific standards, a lot of developers are going to park what they need, and they'll still end up providing what's, what's required or a good amount of parking. And there's 1,900, or 19,600 square feet of open space that is provided with this development. Proposed development standards, again, we talked a little bit about this, zero to 20 feet. Side setbacks, 10 to 145 feet, as far as what we have here. And it's a mix really from two to five stories, five stories being loaded along the arterial, making its way all the way down to the back portion. There's a lot of proposed different types of building types within this. Stack flats up in the front portion, and then moving your way back to things like townhomes, muse homes, that are smaller scale, that are more appropriate for the backend, where you have more of the existing neighborhood. This is just another view of kind of how that works. Again, all of that intensity loaded towards the front portion, and then moving it back towards the existing neighborhood where that R2 portion is for that. So just a couple kind of things related to this. You know, the parking is required to be placed either on the interior of the site or in the back away from, from streets. So this kind of puts that right in the middle there for that. Internal driveways and alleys provide access to those grounds and enables the street to have kind of active and shade ground floors. And the code restricts the number of curb cuts and driveways to enhance pedestrian safety. So this is something you see a lot of issues with, where you have, you know, buildings that have drive, that have garages in front and driveways in front. And even if they're in residential areas, cause issues related to pedestrian safety. And some of the standards in here, again, are promoting that type of development for this. Again, this is, while it's not, parking is not allowed between the building and the street. There is some on-street parking that is, that is utilized within this. You'll see it a little bit over by number two, and along that road within the center portion for it. And really, between all of it, it's parked at 1.7 spaces per unit. Again, there's requirements in this for enhanced landscaping, wider sidewalks, as well as shade that are not in our existing kind of underlying zoning code, intending to have spaces like these where you're able to, that's much more friendly, pedestrian-friendly, that really increases and improves the environment around you. There are, there are climate resilient elements within this, some of them are required, other ones aren't. But it provides the opportunity for them. So with this, we replaced underutilized parking with vacant lots with UV-reflective roofs and green space. So because we were able to reduce the parking, you have room for other things like open space for that. We have solar canopies here to reduce heat gain and generate electricity. This isn't required, but something that is allowed within this code for you to do. Again, less parking, so there's less total asphalt that's here. All the shaded, shade, not only shaded areas along that, but also the open space, provide space for residents to gather and play. And then it also is designed to capture stormwater, there's requirements, it has to go through the commercial rainwater harvesting ordinance. And so it does have all of those related to it. And just ultimately, you know, pedestrian streets that are enhanced, you know, walkability. So this is ultimately the proposed design, kind of with an example of kind of what it may look like related to that. And that's just an example of how the tool may work on a medium-sized site essentially. So we did want to talk just a little bit about kind of what we see as the kind of shared benefits of the community corridors tool. And really, what we're trying to do is find this balance that really does benefit many different kind of sectors of the community. So looking at both city goals, developer goals, and community goals. I mean, we want this tool to be utilized, but we want it to be utilized in order to make better places and to support our goals for housing and to support our climate goals. So what we, you know, have done as far as trying to, to, to develop this is, one, that hopefully implements city policies, encourages the reuse of existing buildings and infill sites. So there's a lot of standards in here that allows for the reuse of existing buildings. Something that's transit and pedestrian-oriented versus auto-centric and auto-oriented. One that produces more housing options. It does have requirements for wider shaded sidewalks. Currently sidewalks are required to be four feet, this requires eight to 12 feet for the sidewalks. And there's shade requirements that aren't in the current code. There's connect, it's a requirement for connected street networks, efficient use of infrastructure. So as we build intensity and we build density, it's more efficient use of our existing infrastructure instead of continuing to build outward, which is very expensive and doesn't lead to efficient uses of, of services. And reductions in water use and energy consumption. So as you increase in density, water use goes down. So again, meeting our water goals and our energy consumption goals by, by also like trying, by working to reduce auto-dependency and auto-use. Predictability of development, this is both for the community and for the, and, and for the development developer. So by embedding the community values within the code, instead of relying on potentially, you know, you know, potentially either a design review process or, or feedback in order to try to drive that process, you're making it more predictable for everyone in the community, and then ultimately just a simplified development process. So that was a lot, just kind of talking through some of that stuff. We just wanted to go through and kind of show where, kind of how we got to where we were with the proposal and why we've made some of those choices. So we did want to go through kind of some of your feedback that you had at the last meeting, and really talk through, you know, your kind of, just kind of respond to some of it. So one of the, one of the, this is kind of just a summary, and then I'll walk through some things. What is a corridor and where does the CCT apply? That's why we mapped the, the tool. It can be very site-specific, so there are situations to where you have zoning along the front, frontage, and then there's another, you know, connected parcel and things of that sort. But we really did try to attempt to show the kind of extent of this through the mapping. Impacted the proposed parking statement requirements, we heard some comments related to that. Setbacks and stepback requirements to match current requirements, we'll talk a little bit about this in a second. Summary of some of the feedback as well, just talking about alcoholic beverage service. We got some comments from Commissioner Kinney on if it's appropriate to have, to allow those in office zones. Adding a requirement for cool roofs on new structures. Does the tool allow for parking in the right-of-way? It does. Providing more maps and geospatial analysis, which we already talked about. And then kind of looking at, you know, potential subjective language in some of those areas and how we can kind of clarify things within the code. Some of the subjective language, I think we did get some of that feedback, is really intended to provide some flexibility to allow for better design and allow for staff to be able to make some decisions if need be for that. Some other items, ensure consistency with the term adjacent throughout the code, we did look back at that, you know, kind of address that. Adding a requirement to preserve contributory structures on the site. These are things I think we want to get some more additional feedback from the commission on. Fix a typo to, oh yeah, so there was a typo in the code, which we've made a change to, that it, it already had 35 feet, it was intended to be three stories, but we hadn't updated the two to a three, and it was just a typo essentially. Revise the section on block scale to avoid repetitiveness. So we wanted to talk a little bit about kind of just the, limiting the impacts on neighborhoods and talk about our setbacks and setbacks. So we look at things a little differently in this code versus what we currently do. So as it is right now, when you are abutting in R1 parcel, you're required to set back one and a half times the height. It's a pretty significant setback, and one of those barriers that we did identify as we were looking through and doing our zoning code analysis. So I will mention this as well, like zoning code, as far as this, our zoning code goes, it wasn't just us. ARP did also a, a code audit for us, and a lot of them aligned with what we were doing, and this was one of the ones that came up in that. And so what we're trying to do here is really create more predictability, but get at the same type of thing. This is an example, just kind of showing you the difference between the two. So 36-foot, 36-foot building in a C2, C2 zone adjacent to R1, the UDC would require that to be set back 54 feet, which is pretty significant. And, and, and I think the goal of a lot of those variable setbacks that we have in our code, which are very difficult to predict and are challenging to develop under, was really getting into kind of privacy mitigation and a lot of the stuff that we're trying to do with setbacks and the setbacks. So with the CCT, basically the height is limited to 25 feet within 30 feet of the property line. And then if you go up to 50 feet, you have to move that back to another 50 feet. One of the things that our code has that are underlying zoning or existing zoning does not have is privacy mitigation. We actually added this in after our last meeting, because we've heard concerns about potential privacy mitigation by reducing some of those setbacks. So this really tries to get at that sweet spot between allowing for predictability, allowing for more use of that building, but also addressing some of those privacy concerns. Some revisions we made, I talked about this before, fixed that typo to match the height on stories on R2. Again, it was, it was 35 feet and two stories, it was really intended to be 35 feet, three stories. We did bump that up to 36 to allow for 12 feet per story, just because that's generally the kind of modern building practice, is a 12-foot, 12-foot floor-to-ceiling height. Ceiling clarified that perimeter yard setbacks apply along adjacent property lines. We added in a requirement for privacy mitigation, as I mentioned, within 50 feet of adjacent single-story residences, with our zone to R2 are more restrictive. We clarified some facade standards, and then we made a clarification on the types of parking that may be provided. So on-street, structured, surface lots, et cetera. We made some edits to maintain consistency. There are terms such as street-site adjacent, all within UDC, all mean kind of slightly different things. So we made sure that it was consistent with the rest of the code in doing so. We made an adjustment of the site-size threshold for master plan requirements. So we did an analysis of some of the feedback we received at the last meeting was why 15 acres, is that correct? And we were like, we think it is, but we're not sure, so we're going to look at it. So we went back and actually did an analysis of kind of, kind of big-box retail and, and big-box kind of shopping centers. And we really found that there's a, there's like a kind of cutoff around nine acres to where a lot of the smaller stuff's all lower than nine acres. And then you see a lot of the, the larger ones with, with large, big anchors, and ones that we think could potentially redevelop with this at about 12. And so the, that's, so we've actually moved that down, because I think it's more appropriate of a, of a kind of cutting point, a cutoff point than 15 acres. So we made that, that adjustment as well. Removal of the section related to street manual, is it conflicted with other portions? I think it was just confusing as well, so that portion was also removed from this. We do want to just put this in front of you, some items for discussion. First one is just cool roofs. So we know there was a comment from Commissioner Lampeau on cool roofs. This is a building code item. In general, we don't like to put building code items in our zoning code. It's not, most of, most of the developments already actually put white roofs on their buildings, but that is something that we are hesitant to do. We do want to get your feedback on it. It is something that we're currently working on, building code changes in our Southwest Building Code, I always get this wrong, Southwest Building Code Collaborative, in order to, to look at kind of ways that we can increase efficiency and increase sustainability. And this is an item that would be perfect for that, and something that we really do want to look at. But something that we're just not really sure if it really belongs within our zoning code. Second one, we just want to get the commission's feedback. I know Commissioner Kinney had mentioned both of these two. We do want to get their, their feedback on both the allowance of alcoholic beverage service, and if it's appropriate within office zones. And then the addition of a requirement for production of contributing historic resources on site. So related to historic resources, part of the reason why there isn't a requirement is really as you get outside of downtown, we don't have many HBZs. We don't have as many historic districts, and a lot of the overlays, that's the reason why, a partial, part of the reason why the overlays are really within those downtown areas is because they do a better job at protecting them. So as you get outside, if you actually start to map it, there's very few historic districts that are even applicable related to this. So we wanted to make sure that it was an incentive there for it, but it's also something that, that really didn't necessarily apply as you start to get out of those downtown areas. Okay. Wanted to talk a little bit about what we've done since we were last here. So we have held some community engagements since the last meeting. We held some, what we were calling office hours, they were basically 30-minute appointments to the public. They could come and speak with, with staff, ask us any clarifying questions, kind of provide feedback, and really wanted to just kind of get an understanding of where people were and talk things through with them. We held 24 of these in the last week or so. They were in-person, online, night during the day. And we actually opened up, we initially started with 12, we weren't sure how many people would actually take us up on it. It was pretty popular, so we opened up to another 12 sessions related to that. And we were really there to answer questions, receive feedback, and go through that. We have been presenting to our boards and commissions to get their feedback, especially in those specific specialties. We've helped, we've met with neighborhood associations. And then we've been working on website updates, we know that there's a lot of information, especially within our frequently asked questions. It's hard to navigate, sometimes it's hard to understand. So we've been consistently making adjustments to our website to try to be reflective and, and of a lot of the feedback that we're getting. We had a very long frequently asked questions that was on our website. We tried to consolidate those into themes and then actually tried to organize them in a way to where the most common questions were moving their way towards the top, so people could actually access those as best as possible. I swear, I'm almost there. So some neighborhood concerns and common concerns that we're, that we're hearing right now. Impact on neighborhoods, just building height in general. There has been quite a bit of comments about just arterials and collector streets, and whether it's appropriate for it to be allowed on both of them. Lack of notification, there's a concern about no notification from this tool. Excluding uses, the increase in the urban heat island effect, or just overall general just increase in heat. Existing infrastructure capacity, parking, potentially, you know, using this as a pilot versus allowing for it citywide. We wanted to just kind of talk a little bit through some of these and why we're kind of where we're at. So there are some, you know, additional, some other kind of common concerns as well. Things such as, you know, a sunset clause, request for a sunset clause. People want to slow down the process for more feedback. Their concerns about there's just too much zoning flexibility within the tool, rezonings, and then blocking amount of views. So talk a little bit about excluding uses. So we agree with this. I mean, we don't want this to be utilized for things such as car washes, drive-throughs, smoke shops. So related to alcoholic beverage service, you know, the commission can definitely make a recommendation to us on to not include things such as alcoholic beverage service in the office zones. We did exclude smoke shops, I think it was an oversight last time, made sure that those are excluded. We have had requests for hookah lounges to be excluded. This is challenging. One is that hookah lounges are actually being addressed in a separate process to a city attorney's office right now and how to deal with that. The second one is that hookah lounges are considered an entertainment use. So you end up actually restrict, if you were to restrict the entertainment use, you'd end up restricting things such as small theaters, movie theaters, et cetera. Those are things that actually we've seen, especially in mall redevelopment, that are actually, and they support, you know, they're, they're entertainment options for the community. So it's really, it's actually more challenging. I think we set out to intending to exclude hookah lounges, but I think through the other processes. but I think through the other processes, we should be able to get at the goals of excluding them from, from this. We wanted to talk a little bit about kind of urban heat island misconceptions, I think. Just with the fact that, you know, the real thing that causes a lot of the urban heat island effect is really sprawling development. So as, as you spread out more and more, that's what's causing a lot of the urban heat island effect. And we've seen it up in the Phoenix area. And it's one of the things that we're trying to get at here is really to, to kind of hopefully direct some of that direct the development into the city versus actually providing more of it on our periphery. On top of that, well-designed compact development can contribute less to the urban heat island effect than competitive sprawling development, but also parking lots and vacant lots. So, you know, we met with the U of A Lad Keith and who was a, you know, an expert within, within heat policy, in extreme heat policy and talked through this with him. And, and really a well-thought-out development, replacing a parking lot, replacing a vacant lot even, could have a significant improvement in the heat situation within an area. So if you look at the regulations within this, it requires shade, it requires enhanced landscaping as well and reduce parking. Those are all things that improve that situation. Just wanted to point this out related to kind of how things work. And this is from the Trust for Public Lands, just looking at the actual intent, the intensity of heat and where the extreme heat areas are. I just pointed out a couple of them because it just kind of gives you an understanding. But the one in the middle there with the little donut hole is Elcon. And it's showing the parking lots around where the actual development is in the center. So you're seeing that's the development in the center where the big box retail is being actually cooler than those parking lots on the outside. We're also looking at the same type of thing when you start getting over where Park Place Mall is. One of the other interesting things about this, if you guys know where the gateway development or gateway planned area development is, it's essentially Speedway and Colb. That's all vacant there. At one point it was going to be redeveloped. It's a superfund site, so I think it's been really challenging. But that's a huge heat sink over there and it's completely vacant. So it's just showing that those are really where you're seeing a lot of the heat getting sucked up and held onto. And the potential for, for redevelopment to actually help with some of those situations. Some of the other concerns related to kind of just existing infrastructure capacity. Just, just so everyone's aware, any required infrastructure upgrades will be paid by the developer. Essentially, if you come in and you don't have the actual capacity for your infrastructure, whether it's electrical capacity, whether it's wastewater capacity, you have, you go through review. Those agencies review it and you will be required to make those improvements in order to make sure that you're, you have the capacity. We do also have impact fees. They go directly toward parks, police, fire and transportation. And honestly, like, not honestly, but when it comes down to it, underutilized sites are not paying for services and still have infrastructure there. As we increase our development, it provides more resources to pay for infrastructure maintenance and city services for that, instead of creating more infrastructure on the periphery, which we'll eventually have to maintain as we move forward. There were questions and requests for pilot areas to basically have this on certain smaller portions to kind of learn about it. Our urban overlay districts and our downtown incentive districts were pilots for this. We learned a lot from them. They've taught us what those barriers are and how they work. We have heard that, you know, that it shouldn't be a citywide approach. One of the things, one of the reasons why we have chosen this, did it be citywide or we've looked at it this way, is really that it doesn't target development in select neighborhoods. It's a strategy for limiting displacement in doing so for that. And then ultimately just, you know, corridors are where there's opportunities for housing and for our city to grow. We've heard a lot of concerns about, you know, not wanting to make changes within existing neighborhoods and things of that sort. And the corridors are those areas where we can grow, provide that housing without necessarily having that. Talk a little bit about parking and parking, just parking regulations. So there's a lot of negatives that come from overparking that we've seen. This is one of the biggest barriers that we've seen, that we've really, that we have within our zoning code. When you require too much parking, it leads to a lot of bad environmental issues. Obviously it holds on to heat more than anything. We saw that in another slide. It leads to all kinds of stormwater runoff issues. It leads to inefficiency of the site. It also can lead to just a really bad urban environment. It's not an efficient use of, of the, of the land for that. Almost all the time, when you end up having an arbitrary number for a requirement for parking, at some point you're going to over, over require, you're going to require too much parking than you actually need at some, some, some point. What we've seen all over the country, there's zoning, there's, there's parking reform going on. And what we've also seen even in our region, places like Marana, allowing for that flexibility and for a development to come in and really propose what, what their requirements are, is a good way forward to allow for this. Our proposal, the way we've set it up, really does require someone to come in and justify what type of parking they need. There are situ, you know, they could come in and they could say, you know, we have this other development, you know, on the other side of town or just down the road. And it hasn't, it doesn't need two, two spaces per unit. We've only really fill up one point four spaces per unit. And they use that as an example, or they're, we're on a bike boulevard. We anticipate a certain portion of the people here may utilize a bike. Maybe there's a two-person household and they only want, need one car because one person can bike most of the time or they share their vehicle. And so that allows for that flexibility. What we've also seen is that most people that develop will park to what their needs are because they're selling a product. They want to make sure that the person that's, that's living there has access to parking because it's much more convenient than trying to find a space on the road. We have examples where places have underparked the Benedictine and they're actually going through and fixing that. And they've currently gone through and they're building more parking to the north in order to fix that issue. So there is a potential for some impacts and underparking, but there are also a lot of negatives that come along with requiring too much parking. Sunset clause and a sunset date related to this. There have been requests for that. Ultimately, it just creates uncertainty in the, in the community as far as people not knowing if it's going. This, and this generally comes when it's getting close to that sunset date on whether someone wants to even start a project. So it causes some uncertainty in, in the process. If there is an actual sunset date and there's a thought that it might go away. If, if, if there's a thought that it might go away in six months or eight months and it takes me eight months to go through the design process and get everything ready or, you know, or, or even get a, get a, get a land on contract, it's going to make, it could, you know, keep you from actually going through and actually moving on it. It, 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 sorry. It could have a negative impact on what can be developed because I could choose potentially the underlying zoning. But what we've seen and what we've done with other projects, similar to our electric vehicle ordinance and ADUs, is that we, and, and we recommend this, we actually think this is a really great idea, is to recommend a review in one to two years to look at this, to see how it's functioning. Look and see what the development's going, coming in, whether it does need tweaks. I have a feeling there's probably going to be some changes we're going to have to do down the road. That's just smart policy to go ahead and do so. And that's, that's what, that's what we recommend related to this. We've heard some comments related to slowdown, slowing down the process, provide more feedback. Engagement really did start in 2023. And we've really built upon a lot of the efforts and the things that we've heard from the community and what we built here. It was built on a decade of planning and community input. And we really do, there is an urgency that mayor and council is set in front of us related to this, to develop and deliver more housing, especially affordable housing. As you see, kind of related to our housing needs assessment is something that there is an urgency to, to making these zoning code reforms. Giving too much zoning flexibility. So ultimately there's just trade-offs on what we have to provide in order to get something to be built. This goes down to that market analysis that I was talking about to where they're like, four-story building is one of the few things that can actually be built right now. And if your zoning code doesn't allow it, you're not going to get anything. So basically what we're looking at here is, you know, one that hopefully limits the location to areas where that can support growth for commercial, office and residential. We have to provide those enhanced standards. So you allow for the additional building height, but you provide for all of these other things as well that lead to a better product for that. They still need to meet all of the technical and zoning standards in the Unified Development Code. But that's, that's kind of what we're looking at. I know there's concerns about, about notification and the need for notification. The notification, what we've seen is in a lot of cases, if there is a notification process, the person who owns the property or the developer will choose the easiest option. The easiest option right now is to use the underlying zoning, which promotes auto-centric development and things that don't support our policies. There are also, you know, some concerns about the fact that even go, even having notification and input through a rezoning process, you know, you still end up with products that are not the best, right? It's not predictable what's going to come out of there. And in order to do so, you really need to have a, an engaged, educated population in order to actually provide that input. So outside of maybe fifteen or so kind of neighborhoods or whatever, there's a large portion of the city that just doesn't understand, it doesn't have the time for the process and doesn't necessarily have knowledge of the process. That's a capacity issue. That's something that we can work on. But the goal here really is to embed a lot of those things we've heard through the community process in order to make sure that it applies to all development instead of, instead of an un, kind of predictable process that is reliant on neighbors and, and, and residents to provide lots of input and feedback. So not a rezoning. So this is a code amendment. It's not a rezoning. I know there's been a, a lot of talk that this is a citywide rezoning. It is a code amendments. It's a modification of our standards to create an additional development option. It's kind of similar to our flexible lot development when we did that for that. And it's pretty much a criteria, it's similar to like a criteria-based overlay essentially. And then just blocking mountain views related to that. The reason why we put in setbacks and setbacks and also loaded this onto our corridors is really to, to, to help with that. There's something to be said about, you know, buildings framing views and things of that sort. But this is just an example of, again, you know, fifty-five, fifty-five feet or whatever, but still those views being there. The impact is, you know, it, it's, it's, there's a potential for tall buildings, taller buildings to be built. But also it's not going to be every single parcel along corridor for that. So ultimately, you know, this is kind of where we're at. The, the, the proposal in front of you and the benefits of the proposal is really looking at reusing underutilized properties, building more housing and diversity and diversity of that housing, bringing a new life and activity to underutilized sites and underused sites in our corridors. We're looking at, you know, shifting our transportation towards walking, biking and transit. We understand that we have a long ways to go. You know, it's not going to immediately be a situation to where everyone's going to be biking and walking and taking transit. But as we start to chip away from that, it meets our climate goals. It helps to reduce, it helps to reduce our emissions over time. It helps to really help with air quality. It helps with greening of areas. The, the, the amount of heat that's produced by automobiles and automobiles driving around is significant. So it helps with heat as well, reducing our environmental footprint, as I mentioned, and then just ultimately fostering equitable development in the city of Tucson. Real quickly, wanted to touch on EV charging regulations and just kind of remind you that that is also a part of this. I can get to it. So just a little bit of background, this was from a September eleventh, twenty twenty-four study session to address the following, revise requirements on site expansions to clarify EV requirements, apply to newly developed parking areas, establish a path to reduce EV requirements when less parking is provided. And then we ultimately held a public meeting and got feedback on those, those proposals and those proposals from mayor and council. And really what's in front of you are really three things. And it's amending those standards to the base number of require of, of EV spaces to be based on what's provided and that's what's required. So what was interesting is previously we had it based on requirements. So if you could reduce your parking to zero, you would still have to provide potentially like twelve, twenty, whatever EV spaces. So it's proportional now. So it's a change to that to make sure that, that that's proportional. And then we made an adjustment for existing sites that are expanding if they're not providing any additional parking. This is the loft situation to where they were expanding. They weren't, they were already overparked. They didn't need to provide any additional spaces, but we were requiring them to put in a whole bunch, not a whole bunch. I feel like four more EV spaces that were there. The goal of this was to minimize retrofitting costs. It wasn't necessarily to have to go back and, and put in EV spaces. And then clarifying some language on ADA requirement compliance spaces. So with that, I know that was a lot. Staff recommends planning commission set the community corridors tool and EV charging UDC amendment for a public hearing on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. We are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dan, for the presentation. I think you deserve a drink of water. I'd like to now open this up to, for discussion to the commission. And what do you want to start us off? Yes, Commissioner McCantsy.
I have a very quick and question related to the latest EV charging. Are they, are you, is this including ADU EV charging requirements?
I believe we've done a policy, a, a policy clarification related to the EV charging stations for ADUs. This is not related to that. That's what, within the building code.
Thank you.
I have two questions. And one of them is pretty basic. Again, I'm not an urban planning expert. If the, if you're not getting the outcomes that you desire, you know, that are, you know, consistent with your policies because of the base zoning is, you know, not providing them, why, why aren't we talking about changing the underlying code? I don't mean, you know, just rezoning for a specific site, but changing the underlying code. And the second question is, why not select like, even if there are a lot of them, you know, the highest priority sites, you know, that for this, for this tool and, and, you know, that, that this tool would apply to, and then, you know, identify them and list them. So, you know, people know where, where this, where we really want this development to be, to be located.
Yeah, so Commissioner McCantsy, first thing related to changing the entire code. One, that's a huge undertaking, so.
They've, they've put these, you know, overlays and different kinds of things to amend it for like, I don't know, fifteen years, twenty years?
And, and understanding the urgency of this, that's part of the reason why we are looking at the community quarters to also just the, the amount of impacts that you would potentially have from making an entire code change are pretty significant. What we've seen is that those efforts are very challenging and a lot of times do fail. Additionally, there's issues related to Proposition 207 to where as you make changes, you could open yourself to a whole litany of litigation related to that. So it makes it very challenging to go through and just replace a zoning code wholesale for that.
And then the second question.
Well, I'll just add a little to that, Commissioner McCantsy. I think this is a kind of strategic approach rather than overhauling the entire zone. Because this kind of answers the second question as well somewhat. We are trying to take a more targeted approach and really focused on the corridors as the areas that have the most opportunity for redevelopment. But in terms of why we're not picking and choosing specific parcels, you know, there's, there's standards in zoning that it needs to be uniform in how we apply it across the city so that we're not selecting kind of winners and losers of those property owners. So we need to use criteria that are based on location, site standards, site conditions, etc. And that's how we apply different zoning districts and zoning standards across the city. So that's what we've tried to do here is look at, you know, what is the existing zoning? How can we have a uniform approach across the city in terms of what we would allow through the community corridors tool based on existing zoning and, and just how we're approaching looking at corridors as the basis for where we're looking at development opportunity.
So there's no way to like, you know, just list like, you know, say priority one sites, priority two sites, priority three sites, priority four sites, but still have all of the sites that you guys want in there?
That is something I haven't heard of a tiered approach like that. That's something we could look at again. There'd need to be kind of location criteria that is uniform across the city. So yeah, like maybe looking at intersections or something. Perhaps on that type of. Perhaps on that type of.
Time to walk to a park.
So that's, that's one approach.
Piking routes, which I'm interested in, you know, that type of thing.
Yeah, that's a, that's a.
Doing an optimization sort of thing where, you know, just list them in priority, you know, you have them all on the map there. Thank you.
Commissioner Weller.
Yeah, and I'd like to just add to what Commissioner McCantsy said, you know, if we did add some of these location criteria or. Just more criteria of what would make a site eligible. We might be able to create some more flexibility in some of these spaces like our, perhaps our R two zone, which is intended to be a medium density zone. At, at face value. And so if we look at, I, I think of the example that Dan pointed in his presentation where the R two was adjacent to an O three. And an R two theoretically somewhere in there, if the criteria was right or the location was right or what was happening. Maybe there is a need for added flexibility and we note that, you know, on CCT ineligible site can become eligible. By way of a zoning examiner special exception process. So I wonder if we can add some more of these criteria. We might be able to create some more flexibility for those unknown development types that we haven't heard of or those case by case examples. In a more uniform manner.
Yeah, Commissioner Brisa.
Hi, um, so, um. Interesting thoughts going on here, which, um, so, and. And looking at the case by case spaces, there was a lot of mention of, you know, rather than using a wide swath across the city. Is, I do appreciate, thanks so much for the map. It really highlighted a lot of the areas around Tucson. I'm. My thoughts are that these corridors is that. Putting a development like this on a, say, a. Peter or supporting road rather than an artery is like, you have a four lane. Versus two lane roads throughout Tucson. And putting something on a two lane road with consideration that through a lot of. The neighborhoods throughout Tucson. On the collector streets, some of them don't even have sidewalks or appropriate bike paths. And if there's no public sidewalk or bike path along a certain stretch. It may be, maybe consider that the CCT cannot be used. Or maybe the CCT should not be used on two lane roads at all. Simply because of the traffic impact of the surrounding area that it may not support it. And along those same lines, I think that with any of these projects that. There needs to be, it says it suggests, but there needs to be a traffic. Plan done and what the traffic and how traffic moves around that area. Especially if you're going to be adding more traffic to. The streets in intersections in an area. So. That's my thoughts on, as far as, you know, the corridors are, are, are terraries versus collectors.
Commissioner Martin.
First, I'd like to thank staff for all their work trying to. Provide a catalyst for development along the corridors. I generally support. The base code as it's written, but I do have concerns. In my years on the commissions, I've always tried to understand intent of the proposed code amendments and revisions, whether the text conveys. The intent and whether there are unintended consequences. We've been told that the intent of the code revisions provide predictability and certainty. Of what can be developed on the properties and corridors after reading, rereading this code and providing three sets of markups. I do not believe the intent predictability and certainty has been achieved or can be achieved. For either the developer or adjacent property owners, and I'm concerned about those unintended consequences. I think if you develop under the code as written, there's predictability. But I also believe with the review criteria, the approval processes that are too subjective. And too many are based on interpretation of staff. In the purpose section, it's, there's definitions, high quality design, to be designed better. Interpretations of best design practices. Those are all subjective and every individual has a picture in their mind of what those standards are. Number of parking spaces and the parking statement. I'm not sure when that gets reviewed. Is it with the development plan package submittal?
Sorry, Commissioner Martin. Yeah, so the parking statement related to that. So first, we have a process set up to where when you come in for your pre-submittal, you would get kind of like a pre-approval. So you'd bring in your parking statement. We would look at it, you know, see whether or not it's appropriate or not. Require revisions if it isn't, and then it would be a part of your development package as you come in. I do, I do want to mention the, I think you've mentioned high quality design or good design or something. I believe that's actually a part of the, the purpose statement and just kind of explaining, explaining kind of. You know, what the goals are of this for that.
That's right.
Right.
I think you ought to clarify that the parking statement gets tentative approval with the pre-app.
Okay, we'll look into that. Thank you.
Modifications for conflicts with these months, design solutions consistent with. Enhanced pedestrian experience. Or when a site specific situation requires adjustments to allow for economic feasibility can be made by staff. Those are all very subjective. Five eleven nine C, the request for modifications would not be made until the first middle of the development package. Those are all the staff allowed. Modifications and changes. That is very far down the design process. That really takes away predictability and certainty for a developer. Cause you're, and you're not going to find out until four weeks after you submit that package in comments. Whether you do or do not meet those standards. I think the process needs to be more formal early in the process. And since it's a modification to the base code. Notification to the adjacent property owners and have an appeal process. I know of a recent case in the city where a new reviewer has reinterpreted. A standard that has been the same since I started thirty years ago. And they're applying it differently with a new interpretation. So. There's a lack of certainty or predictability when different staff members. Review things. For the adjacent property owners, they cannot rely on what's stated in the overlay text because the majority of the standards are not fixed. They're subject to staff review and change and discretion is. That discretion given to staff is significant and sometimes not limited, I think for setbacks or some of the standards. I think they're giving way too much authority to interpret, modify and adjust the standards. These, like I said, these processes need to be formal, early. Notification and appeal process. Right now, there's no, no notification for adjacent property owners in any of the modification or interpret, or any of the modification interpretations. There's no certainty or predictability of what can or will be developed because all the potential modifications that staff can make. Regarding building placement, standards, setbacks, parking, placement, parking statements, et cetera. Are, are not. Publicize or notify. As far as major items in the code, I think the tables in five eleven five could be simplified if. You just use ten feet or three quarters H for anything next to R one. You don't have to have your set step back. Exhibit because it's a straight standard, ten feet or three quarters of the height, three stories, four stories. Simplifies that section, gives the neighbor some predictability of what the code's going to be. It's. Less than the one and a half H, but it's more than. What's in the current code. Under privacy, instead of residence, the distance of residence, it needs to be to the. Residential property. Because if the resident residence is twenty feet into the site. And you've got an alley. The, the four story building can be. It's the backyard that's a problem is the residence or the high, high rise looking into the backyards. And the mitigation standards don't really help if you're above one story trees or walls or fences. Parking reductions, I think need to be done with an IPP. And then. I had a question whether or not the table eleven six two for parking locations. Does that apply to? Single family residences and townhomes? Because there's a lot of the, those requirements that don't, don't work for lots for sale. And just for reference, the, I looked at the Pearl, which has twenty-eight hundred square foot lots. A thirteen hundred square foot home is selling for three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So. Small lot, but not very affordable. So. Thank you. I hope you take this into consideration. Like I said, in general, if. I think the code, if you follow it strictly, it's good, but there's way too many. Chances for interpretations, modifications made by staff. And it's not a formal process. Thank you.
I, I have a few quick questions. So I absolutely agree up into interpretation. That was the general. That was the general idea as I was reading through it. Just. We're looking for predictability and we're not really seeing that in the draft. And then the other, I, I appreciate that you pointed me to the resilient Southwest Building Code Initiative. How far along the process is that? It says it started in twenty twenty-three?
Yes, we are in the technical and review and community outreach process or technical advisory process. So we anticipate that code in the next two years or so to be an amendment to our building code.
Okay, so two things about that. I actually wrote down the section of the UDC that calls for L B D O readings. Six point six point three before L B D O requirements for ADUs. Must be developed with a greater than sixty S R I or other cool roof technology. So just wanted to point that out. The other, and then the other thought that I had based on that is that the city of Albuquerque is a member of this initiative, correct? So have you looked at their code or any of the other codes that might be similar to this to see the effects that they might have had?
Commissioner Lampoy, I anticipate that would be part of the Southwest Building Code Collaborative is to look at the lessons learned from each of the jurisdictions and sort of what are our best practices.
Sure. So the, the reason why I ask is because, and we were talking about this right before the meeting, that, that map. When you see all the eligible properties, it's like, wow, that is a lot. And the city of Albuquerque, they have something kind of similar. And so they have a main street corridor and then they have a major transit corridor and both of those things are based on transit ridership and a number of other factors, but. There are only really two of them in the city. It's Central and then Fourth Avenue. And so Central, they have a bus rapid transit line. And apart from that, they have activity downtown, employment, urban and village activity nodes. Which is similar to what we're seeing in, in this draft. So just a recommendation, take a look at it. They, a lot of it's very successful too. So.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weller.
No, I, I can go ahead and, and speak. I, as I mentioned in the, the last study session, I, I would like to applaud staff on, on the work that you guys have done. The outreach even in the last month and a half or so since we last met. I know it's a lot of effort. It's a lot of time and, and I really want to applaud you guys for the work that you have done. And listening into the concerns that we, we have all expressed here. There are a couple of things that I want to note in this notion of predictability, right? That is, that is probably the, the, the single-handed hardest thing when it comes to, to growth and, and development and, and just really any way of life, right? We all want certainty. We all want things to be predictable and, and it's hard to achieve that. But getting to that point where things are predictable, it's great. And I think that's something. That, that we need to, to recognize when we talk about these tools that already exist in place and, and that predictability. Has proven to, to, to be a shortfall there and those, you know, the I I D, the sunshine overlay. The grand overlay, those all require a major design review process. It's onerous, it's costly. And it really doesn't add any more certainty. The same thing with an IPP, reducing parking. You don't get any more of that predictability that you would get through a process that is left to the professionals working at the city, reviewing those items. And so I think, you know, we, we've got to figure out a way in this city, how to accommodate growth. We're eight thousand units short already exacerbate that by five or 10 years more of growth. We're, we're never going to catch up. And how do we start doing it? It's by adopting these tools and policies and putting these types of measures in place. So that we can grow in a responsible fashion rather than in the sprawling nature that we have already done. This is what good planning practice tells you. It's what good smart growth tells you. And really it's how we as a city continue to move in a way that, that doesn't create bigger problems for our infrastructure. And so I, I do want to say I, I fully support this document. Yes, is it perfect? No, there's work to do, but that's, that's every code. That's what we're here to do and continue to evaluate. But I do think it's a, a step in the right direction. In fact, I think there's more we could do to. Address some of these shortfalls that we're currently experiencing, but I do feel that this is, is good planning practice moving forward. And, and with that, I, I want to lead into my next point, which is a notion that there is a significant conflict of interest for. Many of us sitting on this board here. We are appointed individuals by council members because of our professional experience, our expertise in the field. And our relationships in the community. It is not our employers that put us in this position nor pay for us to be here. We all have a personal vested interest. And I personally, being an individual who has studied the professional planning practice my entire career, has been in this space. I am a little offended by some of the comments that have been made that my, the firm that I work for would, would. Benefit from this. And the reality is, is this is a tool that removes the entitlement process. So therefore it is not a, a process where monetary value would be garnered for, for an individual like myself. I do believe in the planning practice. I am a professional certified planner and I full and well support. The idea of good planning for the, the public health, safety and welfare. So with that, I just wanted to dismay some of the, the comments we have received. And that we are all professionals up here acting in a manner in, in the field that, that we are professionals in. So thank you.
All right, Commissioners Zegir, and then after that, I believe you're going to need to take a short break to repark any cars that will be in the. Parking lot downstairs as it closes at eight. So if you're in there, you might want to look at reparking your car. Commissioners Zegir.
My name is pronounced once again, not Zegir, it's Z here. Long E, Zegir. Thank you. Okay, um, so I have, um, a few questions is. Again, I'm still concerned about using the collectors, including the collectors in the CCTV. Again, I'm still concerned about using the collectors, including the collectors, in the CCT. There are currently thirteen main arteries that actually, that I could count, that run east and west, and sixteen that run north and south. And that's where most of these, on the great map you provided, are located. And collector streets have a tendency to not have as many amenities as far as infrastructure to the roads. And their condition can be really iffy, is that maybe requesting to have the collector streets just removed. Also, there are some of the major arteries should not be used, like Country Club. Country Club have large TEP power poles going right up through the middle of sidewalks that are maybe three feet wide. And areas along and parts of Prince and Fort Lowell, which they go down to two lanes. Also, as far as public outreach in neighborhoods and those meetings, as far as them not considered stakeholders. I understand their concerns as far as their property values going down, losing that wonderful southern exposure that we get in the wintertime, and shading effects to perhaps their solar. And also, as far as, on Section 11, or Section 511, six G E, it says planned, the planned interventions to mitigate safety hazards and minimize parking impacts relative to any established residential use within five hundred feet walking distance of the site. So with this planned intervention, so you kind of already know this will be a problem. And I'm wondering if it's possible to include that these planned interventions could be actually written in there a little bit more specific, to include that residential parking permits with signage, as they have around the U of A, could be put in to permits and signage. Even residential parking's only between 5:00 PM in the evening to 8:00 AM in the morning, Monday through Friday. So people, when they come home, they actually have a place to park, and all day on Saturday and Sunday. So their family can come over. And, you know, sign up there, the violators will be towed. There needs to be a little bit of meat and regulatory things on certain of these parts. Parking is a big issue when, if you're going to bring in a development of CCT so close to, you know, our local streets. Let's see. Oh. And I have a question about height restrictions. Okay, so looking at, say, you're going to put in a six-story building height. Is there a minimum lot size? Is that the ten or twelve acres that you guys mentioned before? Or is that six stories and above? Or can you put a six-story apartment complex on a two-acre square lot? I'm just wondering if there's any, you know, as far as lot spaces, is there any difference? Do you have to have, as far as heights of a building put on there versus the lot size?
Yeah, Commissioner...
Zegir.
Sorry, I really didn't want to pronounce that incorrectly. So, yeah, so there isn't a size restriction, but there are dimensional restrictions related to it. So it's based on, there's all these different standards that ultimately restrict what you could actually put on there. There's also requirements to move that intensity, the full building height, closer to the street as well. So while there isn't an actual restriction, if you had, you know, a two-acre site, there could be situations where you might be able to fit a six-story building, and there might be situations where you couldn't. If it were really pretty narrow and long, and you're stepping back from existing development, and you can potentially do that, maybe you could fit it. But I think you're probably gonna see more of that intensity when you get on the larger sites. So there isn't a specific actual restriction based on size, but all of the other dimensional standards working together would limit the ability to put it on smaller sites.
Okay, what about Section 511, six G E, as far as intervention to mitigate safety hazard and minimize parking impacts on residential, established residential neighborhoods? Is there any way to make this a little inducive for neighborhoods to be more accepting of the CCT if they knew that they weren't going to have, you know, people from the apartment complex? Or because maybe there won't be enough parking? Or businesses located on the ground floor, they need extra parking, so they park over in the neighborhood because can't park on the street of a major artery generally? So is there anything that can be put in here to, you know, help the neighborhoods out? Help our existing citizens out in our existing, you know, neighborhoods?
Yeah, Commissioners Zegir. So I think we can look at that language to see if there's a way to clarify it more than kind of what it's looking at, to try to get at the intent of what you're saying, to ensure that, you know, there aren't safety impacts and those impacts related to potential parking related to that. So it's something we can look at.
Put it in the language that there's areas, problems. This is where residents can go say, well, we are having a problem. So now the city has to put in signs and protections as far as, you know, not having people drive down the road while their kids are playing outside at high rates of speed because they're late for work. So, all right, thank you.
All right, I think we have a quick recess to re-park any cars, and we can come back. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and give it a one-minute warning to restart session. Wait for Dan, see where he's at. All right, I'd like to bring us back into session. Can I get a thumbs up from those attending online to make sure you're back at your seat? Okay, well. All right, we got a hand up. That's the speaker, okay. So, do we have any further discussion that we'd like to bring up? Yes, we have two. Start with Commissioner Lee Kinney Walzak. Commissioner Lee? Lane, oh, sorry.
I will forgive you once. I just wanted to start back off and speak about flexibility versus predictability. I'm a huge advocate for flexibility. We have a housing situation that needs our direct attention now. The thing that is not often predictable is money. It's very fluid. And sitting here and trying to predict every single outcome of a... And sitting here and trying to predict every single outcome of a massive change to our zoning code is silly, I think. And review times and turnaround times, I think, are suffering recently. And I think that that has to do with too much control and too much, I guess, predictability. So, offering changes to our code that leave some flexibility for fluid movement and in-the-moment response as money comes to landowners, property owners, and some trust between the designers, the engineers, the technical minds that are trying to predict and look toward the future while potentially weighing the emotional, possibly, fears of the public. While we navigate through this requires a lot of flexibility. So again, I, I think that letting you guys navigate how to put a little bit more trust in the, in the designers and the registrants to make the right decisions and create design documents that, you know, adhere to the code to the best of their knowledge and then, again, navigate through case-by-case basis. Trying to make a list of prioritized sites. I don't know how you do that fairly. And again, many layers of complexity have to come out, come together in a single moment to make a project work. So, limiting the number of sites just based on like what corner they might be on doesn't seem fair. I appreciate the approach where you're identifying a street typology and every single site is unique and will come with its own necessities for upgrades. That'll be upgrades to sidewalks, that'll be parking, that'll be gathering information from neighbors in some fashion or another. But we have to find a way forward that does not take years for approvals because the money goes away really fast if that happens. So, again, I'd like to just commend you. It's an immense amount of work. I trust all of you and your judgment. And so, I appreciate the work that you've done. And I think that that relationship ends up being very reciprocal in my industry as well. So, thank you.
Commissioner Lee, Kenny, and then Walzak. I got Lane right that time.
Thank you. And, and thank you to, to Dan and all the staff for, for putting all this together. I know it's a, it's a huge project. And you're doing a great job. So thank you. Just to kind of go off of what Commissioner Lane was saying, the flexibility versus predictability, maybe, maybe this could be addressed in a, you know, required review that happens at the end of every year or after the end of the first year. You can see what happened, what worked and what didn't work. You can put in additional objective standards if, if you find that they're necessary, if there wasn't enough predictability, or maybe there wasn't enough flexibility. You can, you can do that. So I don't know. I think I would support a, something written in here that would be a required review after a year. I know that you all do that anyway. I, I think you take a, a look at, at what, what is working and whatnot after a year or so, or you try to at least. And that's great. But you all might not be here forever. So, I'd like to have that in writing if that's possible. Real quick, going on to alcoholic beverage service. I did bring that up last time. I don't really actually have a very strong opinion on it either way. I just thought that it was kind of, it stuck out to me because the, the goals here are to utilize, you know, to, to try to get underutilized properties developed and to incentivize affordable housing. And it just seemed odd that it, that, you know, one of the things we're doing here is allowing additional alcoholic beverage service. I don't know that it'll ever actually come up, but it, but it just stuck out to me. About preserving contributing properties, I don't actually agree that most of the contributing properties that this would impact are already covered by the HBZs, PZs, the MPZs, and the IID. I think there's also plenty of national registered districts that are not included in HBZs and MPZs that this would cover. And they're entirely made up of contributing properties. So, you know, like Sam Hughes and Blumenhelm, Miracle Mile is not in an IID or an HBZ or anything like that. So, I, I'm still thinking about if we can have more protection of contributing properties. It, it, it probably will go into the applicability section of 511-2. Maybe, I'll, I'll think about it some more as well over the next couple of weeks. And maybe you all can take another look at it. And maybe we can talk about it in the, in the meantime. And also, I'd like to, to just confirm for the record that this doesn't, this tool won't apply in HPZs or MPZs or any IID. So this won't, you know, anybody in Jefferson Park or Feldman's or Wuna or Armory Park or El Presidio or Old Fort Lola or Rincon Heights, those roads don't apply. You can't use this tool in those areas. What if new MPZs are created? Would this no longer apply in those areas?
Commissioner Kenny, yes. Because they're not specifically listed, the ones that are in the code, they would apply.
Okay. Kid?
May, I need to be clear. They, this, the CCT would not apply to those areas.
Right.
Yeah.
Got it. That was my assumption. Can you explain how corridors are designated and how roads get placed on the major streets and routes plan?
So, the major streets and routes plan is a specific plan that was adopted by mayor and council back in like the early eighties. This is a plan, pretty much it's a kind of, it was Department of Transportation at the time. Now it's DTM, Department of Transportation Mobility. And it's really set out to put a road classifications for arterials and collectors, but additionally to set out a future right-of-way. So when a new development comes in, you know exactly you're planning for potential roadway expansion or any sort of improvements that you need to do in the future. So it is a document that was adopted by mayor and council by, I believe, I think it's by ordinance. And the city of Tucson's actually going through and making some potential revisions to the map portion of that over the next six months or so. But it's, it's a document that has been a part of development for a very long time.
Yeah. So if, if these revisions hypothetically create new corridors, would this apply to those new corridors?
Because of the way it's drafted into the code, it would, yes.
If those revisions remove corridors, would the same apply in reverse?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Have you... My, my understanding of major streets and routes plan is that it's kind of a, a document that is kind of jointly administered by your department as well as transportation. Do you see any potential conflict there where maybe transportation wants to add a, designate a new road, a corridor in an area that wouldn't be appropriate for the CCT?
I mean, we work pretty closely with Department of Transportation and Mobility. We're working with them and helping out and reviewing all of the changes that are being proposed to the major streets and routes plans. So, because of that coordination between ourselves, between us, I don't see, foresee that being an issue.
Commissioner Kenny, this is a very timely question because as Dan mentioned, they are working on an update to the major streets and routes plan right now. I will say that over the forty-plus years or so that we've had the major streets and routes plan, there isn't a lot of changes in terms of new corridors being designated or corridors being removed. There are changes sometimes, you know, reduction of width or increase of roadway, future right-of-way. There's been some instances where roads have been removed when we had plans for future construction of a roadway that's no longer in our capital plans. But it's not something that happens very often. And that's why we are using that as the, one of the foundations for this tool is because it is pretty stable over time. And there haven't been a lot of changes to what is considered an arterial and collector.
Yeah. No, that makes sense. Have you considered just simply taking the major streets and routes plan as it is now, copying and pasting it over into this document and saying, this is it now? Any changes to future corridors, any additions or removals are our decision as opposed to major streets and routes decision?
I mean, I think we wanted it to align with that planning that does occur in the Department of Transportation Mobility and within the major streets and routes plan. Because if they have plans for an arterial in a new area potentially, I think we would want this tool to apply to those. So I think it, it makes sense for them to actually be aligned.
Okay. Thank you. Regarding the large-scale developments, there's an additional requirement here for, for a master plan, which includes a narrative. Can you give any more details on what the master plan might require? It seems to me that aside from the narrative, it really doesn't seem to require anything additional than they would already have to do.
Commissioner Kenny, the master plan requirement is for a concept plan as well as a narrative. So, the concept plan would be submitted as part of their formal review. And it has to demonstrate how all of the site features are being integrated together into a cohesive development. So that's reviewed along with the narrative. And the narrative is just a written explanation of what's going on in that concept plan itself. In addition, I'll note that if the director would like to request it, a large-scale development that does require a master plan can be sent to the DRB, the Design Review Board, for review and their recommendation as well, which is another layer of review on those submitted requirements.
Thank you. The concept plan showing integration and all the requirements are being met, how is that different than, you know, a development package that already has, has to be submitted by any type of development?
That's a good question. And I think the distinction really is that a development package can just show a portion of a site. It could just show this is phase one and this is what we're building out right now. And maybe not how cohesively a large scale really works over a longer period of time. So, in a concept plan, we would want to see that all of those future phases, all the types of the uses work together in a way that is really consistent across the entire larger twelve-plus acres of property. A development package can be a much smaller scale even on a bigger site.
Okay. Thank you. And then if, if the director decides to refer to the DRB, what does the DRB look at?
Currently, the DRB would be tasked in the draft with recommending on site circulation, pedestrian environment, the building orientation, public spaces, landscape design, and connection of the site with the surrounding area. So, really targeting some of the standards that are in the CCT and then having specific ability to review to those standards and make sure that they are being met cohesively across that large area.
Okay, thank you. Is there... Is this a requirement or maybe is it discretion from the department to require any sort of development, large or medium or small, to need a traffic impact, traffic impact statement or study?
I'm trying to think of examples as to when it is required. I think it's generally a discretion to say, in conjunction with the Department of Transportation, when it is required, when it meets certain criteria, based on the scale and the scope of the project.
Right. So hypothetically, if there's a large-scale development coming in and the transportation reviewer says this needs a traffic impact study, that can be a requirement?
Yes, that could. And I, I mean, it also could be a consideration that maybe for all master plan sites, it's a requirement because of the size and scope of it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Walzak.
Sure. Let's see. I just, I have a couple of comments. I'm not the newest member of the Planning Commission quite yet, but I am relatively new. And I asked my ward if I could be appointed to fill the vacancy in our ward because of what I saw happening in our neighborhood. So, I'm a homeowner. I'm actually a homeowner and a rental property owner. And I'm the president of my neighborhood association. And in the two months we've been discussing the CCT, I have watched with certainty a number of vacant lots become drive-throughs. So, Commissioner Martin had his, your, your comments are enlightening to me from your perspective and where you sit and where other people who work in your field sit. I understand what you're saying. And I also understand concerns of neighbors about wanting certainty and a, a plan and a process to follow. But as I've watched vacant lots in my neighborhood on my commute turn into car-oriented gas stations and drive-throughs, we've also been sitting and watching two vacant properties that are trying to become transit-oriented development commercial sites sit vacant for three years because they can't get approval to become activated spaces that the neighborhood desperately wants. And a lot of that is our own neighbors holding up the process, not being able to agree on things like parking. And from where I sit, no neighborhood is ever going to agree on how much parking is necessary. Everybody's gonna have different opinions on that. And I reiterate my support for removing the neighborhood IPP requirement for weighing in on that because it's just such a personal arbitrary thing to discuss. I do, I also want to say Commissioner Martin's comments made me wonder, when staff is reviewing these and has a lot of flexibility and discretion, is everybody working from the same definitions of what transit-oriented design is? How are you gonna ensure that one reviewer's definition is the same as the others? I also, my biggest fear about making a motion tonight and pushing this out to public hearing is just that we, we don't know if it's gonna be successful in achieving the kind of development that we want to see happen. I know we had the same thing happen with ADUs. We, we, you know, made it a little bit more difficult for people to achieve the kind of accessory dwelling units that they wanted on their properties. And we had to go back a year later and, and address that. And then the state did what the state did. But, you know, we've got, here we want, we want to see more housing because of this. Are you gonna have some internal goals or metrics that in a year you can say, this is how many times the CCT was used to build this many housing units? This is how many of them were affordable or market rate or higher? And are we gonna know in a year how many of them were used for alcohol-based businesses or other commercial endeavors? And hopefully, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to be in a position to, to fix that rapidly if that's not working out the way that we want it to. That's all I got.
Actually, that's a, that's a good point.
I think Commissioner McCantsy had his hand up. Sorry.
So, go ahead. Um, I just want to clarify that my, you know, the idea of, you know, those high-priority sites was not necessarily to restrict the use of the CCT, but to sort of illuminate how the CCT would achieve the outcomes that you want, you know, in these sites. Okay? So, I'm, I'm all in favor of the goals of this CCT. But I would, I just would like to, I would like to see more on, well, how in, in this location does it increase, you know, use of transit, biking, pedestrian, being able to use parks, get rid of vacant lots, all that kind of thing. Thank you.
Commissioner Lampe.
So, just a thought. What if there was some sort of monitoring program that could be included that after a year, you know, we look at what's successful, what's not successful. And after a year, there's an automatically triggered review where we might look at the code and revise it based on where we saw successes and where we might not have seen successes?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Lampe, I think we agree as well. We want to make sure that we are monitoring it and understanding how it's working, how, what needs to be fixed, what's been successful. So, yeah, we are in support of reviewing it after a year. We have our permitting system that we can, that would be helpful and will help us to track it over time. So, all we really need to do is just build in a portion into it that tags it as a So all we really need to do is just build in a portion into it that tags it as a CCT project, and we can continue to monitor it. So yeah, we are in complete agreement with, with that idea.
That would work. Thanks.
To that point, I just want to say something like this has to be given time to succeed. And a year is not exactly enough time for a full development to reach from concept to construction and use. So we just got to be cognizant of that as well, maybe a longer horizon for that.
Yeah, so Chair or TZP now. Yeah, yeah, I, it's very true that a year isn't that much time. It does take a long time. But it doesn't mean that we can't be tracking pre-applications. It doesn't mean that we can't be tracking projects that are in process as they go. So there, there is benefit to looking at it, you know, potentially at a year and just saying, you know, why aren't we getting anybody who's coming in and actually looking at this? Or, you know, what type of development are we seeing that is interested?
Can I, can I just clarify one more? I just want, when you're asking for like design or parking plans, let's say, from the registrants and, and the idea that you can't, you know, build an entire development of this size in a year and, and monitor its success in that amount of time, I just want to be clear, when, when you're asking for design narratives and an interpretation of, and there's some looseness written into this code, I don't think it should be staff that interprets this. I am proposing that you put the trust in the registrants, that they are designing according to what you've written here. And then we, and you move it forward quickly so that it's not being tied up in your, on your desks.
All right, it does not look like we have any more hands up or further discussion. So I'd like to entertain a motion to bring this to public hearing.
Chair or TZP now, I would gladly make a recommendation to set the Community Corridors Tool and EV Charging UDC text amendment for a public hearing on February 26, 2025.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a second. Okay, so all of those in favor of bringing this to a public hearing for the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. I do believe that was unanimous. Just in case, all those who oppose, say nay. Hearing none, I believe we have a motion passed and sets for a public hearing to hear the Corridors Tool UDC code amendment on February 26, 2025. Moving on quickly, hopefully, item number five, PDSD staff announcements.
Yeah, as far as just staff announcements, and we'll talk about this during kind of future agenda items, but yeah, no, no, no staff announcements right now.
Hearing none, item six, future agenda items.
There we go. Yeah, so, yeah, so future agenda items. As you may have noticed, we are having a second study session next week on the 5th related to Plan Tucson. So the Plan Tucson team has been busy doing, going and doing a bunch of community outreach, held several feedback sessions. They've been doing these meeting at box. They're closing up their feedback and their first kind of feedback period related to the first draft as of Friday, I believe, or the 31st. And they're going to come back and provide an update to everyone, get feedback on their first draft, which will be helpful as far as, you know, making changes and bringing a second draft and a public hearing in the near future. Additionally, we'll have on the 26th, as you just motioned towards a public hearing on the CCT. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, call to the audience. All right. At this time, I'd like to offer to the public an opportunity to speak on any subject that is not listed on the current agenda as a public hearing, not applicable. As of now, we have the following people who have requested to speak, Vicky Franz and Jessica Janasek. And a few additionals, let's see. All right. Given the amount of people, I'm going to limit this to a three-minute call to the audience. And is Vicky per speaker? Sorry. Vicky. I'm sorry, Nick, Vicky, I think your mic is not on. Technical difficulties. We will not count this against your time. Commissioner Abriza, we saw that you had your hand up. Did you have anything to say? You missed it.
Okay, yes, I had one question about Plan Tucson. Um, this coming up is to, I had asked for a kind of a text-only version, which is the tables and maps. And I did receive an email back that they said they're having, they, they really having problems leaving that in and removing the, what I call it tabletop, you know, the like coffee table book kind of thing that, that makes it really long. I don't know if there's, um, I will check to see the version that they put out to see if it's been scaled down, but as far as just kind of the facts only, you know, with everything kind of put together and with tables and index and an appendix, that sort of thing. More like a technical review rather than a, you know, magazine type thing. Anyway, that's the only thing I had to say. Thank you.
Commissioners Seager, I think, um, I believe we sent you a more text-based copy of that either earlier this week or late last week. And if you didn't receive that, we can definitely follow back up with you on that.
All right, thank you.
Of course.
All right. Continuing with call to the audience, Vicky Franz? Sorry about that.
Let's take it from the top. Vicky Franz, 3403 East Seneca Street, Palo Verde neighborhood. I am on the board, and they have sent their concerns to you. I didn't realize I would be saying this after the vote, so I guess it's irrelevant, but I'm going to say it anyway. The latest map showed that the eligible parcels by ward was a great help. It allowed me to take a broader look at how many citizens and neighborhoods would be affected, what the big picture would look like. I have a master's degree in regional planning, and I believe the planning department underwent an exercise several years ago to focus on areas where major future development should be done. And I looked at places like Rita Ranch, Keno and I-10, the Spectrum, Aerospace Parkway, and many other areas where they are growth centers right now. But there was very little CCT eligible property along Houghton. Why not? It's a good, good place to put it because it goes down to Rita Ranch, it'll go to Aerospace Parkway. But you can't put it there because they're all PADs. So these citizens will not have the six-story high-rises in their neighborhoods because they're a protected class. And it was the same way for many of our urban centers. They're all protected, the areas, the neighborhoods around them are all protected by overlay districts, PAD, infill incentives, HPZs, they're all protected neighborhoods. So the best use of the CTV would be to, like Commissioner Lamas and Mark Casey said, the Albuquerque model is what I would see as a regional planner. Take Irvington and First, and that is where you apply the CCT because Irvington and First sort of connect the major development corridors. And I also found in the, in my exploration of land use, Park and Irvington, there's a lot of industrial zoned districts in the middle of these neighborhoods where you could allow the CCT to be applied, and you would actually have really nice housing for people who work there. South of Alvernon, I mean, south of I-10, it's all just industrial. We're not putting up steel plants anymore, so it just needs to be looked at. And I am thoroughly in, in favor of making strip corridors. Use Norte, Del Sur, Irvington, and that's where you make a corridor. So anyway, currently, the central city, okay, central city in neighborhoods are not in any of these protected classes, and that's the whole problem with this thing. You're, we're not a protected class by some sort of overlay or whatever, but too late.
The next speaker is Jessica Janasek.
Hi, thank you very much. I just want to take a moment. Right, so my name is Jessica Janasek. I've lived in the Sam Hughes neighborhood for 10 years on a parcel that abuts the commercial properties along Speedway Boulevard. Since moving in, almost all of the new development near my home along Speedway has been drive-throughs, tea, coffee, burgers, et cetera. These developments have made my home less desirable and enjoyable. Walking from my house is less safe as cars zoom in and out of these establishments, and the sound and smells of idling vehicles have impacted my ability to even find enjoyment in my own backyard. These have all been done by right. Meanwhile, the parcel behind my home, directly behind my home, has sat vacant for over eight years. It has been expressed to me by many developers that this is because developing it does not pencil out. Our current zoning code establishes and enshrines a car-centric development that is not sustainable. These Community Corridors Tool that has been developed creates an opportunity for the type of development our city needs and will ultimately make our city safer and healthier for all residents. The tool has been well researched, is detailed throughout tonight's presentation, and it aligns with the vision that residents have expressed time and time again. A large concern is that our city doesn't currently accommodate people with disabilities, and the development that the Community Corridors Tool allows and encourages works to make the city more accessible for all of our residents. I applaud the planning team for taking the time to develop a way to work towards meeting our housing needs, making it possible to live without a car, and priority prioritizing needs of people. So thank you for taking the time to develop this proposal. I also really appreciate the plans to review in one to two years to ensure that the tool is actually achieving the goals that are stated. So I just wanted to express my support for this, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I'd like to call the next speaker, who, I apologize if I mispronounced your name. I'm going to say Alan Coke, Cook? Kate? Cath. Apologies. Three minutes.
Hello. I am a member of the El Conquistador Neighborhood Association for 14 years. And we have our president here tonight, Luis Garcia, board member James Beard, and neighbors Ed Iris and Iris's husband, and a lady who had to leave named Anne. So we live right behind Elcon Mall. In the 90s, I'm sure Commissioner Martin remembers the Donnybrook that happened between the mall, the city, and the neighbors. We are well aware of what a good fight looks like. And we're concerned that a relaxed setback between a CCT tool and our one-story R1s north of the mall will ultimately be an issue down the road. Ultimately, the city, the mall, and our neighborhood formed a tripartite commission. I'm not sure that, there's another one in town where the mall representative, representative of the city, and a representative of the neighborhood still meet monthly to talk about the issues that are going on in the neighborhood. It's kind of a unique idea, and it's probably not any different than this unique idea. We like Commissioner Martin's concerns that he has, that there's not a lot of notification. There wasn't notification of this meeting to our neighborhood. We received it through our friends at the Miramonte neighborhood. We're concerned that something might slip through without any neighborhood input. We're not sure why this happened at all without notification of our neighborhood because we're involved potentially in a large potential redevelopment in some decade away. There's a lot of land at Park Mall, there's a lot of land at Tucson Mall. We would just suggest 511, I think it's 511-8, that the way you've worded this stays the way it is and that there's not any divergence from what it is now that you've proposed. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cath. I'd like to now call James Beard.
Hello, I'm Jim Beard. I live in El Conquistador, right between Elcon Mall and Fifth Street as well. Known the neighborhood all my life. One thing that wasn't noted here, what I saw in the presentation, nothing about floodplains in all suspected speculated locations. Four of the sites are floodplain prone areas. Is that a good idea to develop there? Just point to ponder. SABA, Southern Arizona Home Builders Association, was not part of this. They brought National Home Builders Association in, but not SABA. Well, SABA is a local-based thing. Arizona Construction Trades, again, local contractors should be involved in this stipulation to these codes. They're the ones that work it, not pencils. NARI, National Association of Remodelers, again, they shouldn't be in part of these little mini-mobils and such, and they are not be part of. The reason this was brought to my attention today was due to the mini-mobils. I was told, I had subcontractors I work with, that they're looking at putting the little mini houses in Elcon. I think that'd be a travesty. So that's what brought me to this whole meeting in the first place. And so again, we've got no, no awareness, no knowledge, except for hearsay from other trades. I agree with everything Alan had to say. I think you should reach out to local political groups, ACT and SABA, to help smooth along. It would help out with the codes, force them better. What's our best practices here? Not a national practice, but a southern practice, because that's what this is basing for, is what we do locally, not what you do in Maine, just for a point to ponder. Have a good day, guys.
Thank you, sir.
On the parking, you said 1.4 parking spaces. I had analogy fit started, so I went outside. There's approximately 30 people in here, talking about amount of cars. There's only two bicycles. That's not a good perspective for 1.4 parking per tent, per unit. If you have two, two, if you have one, two-bedroom, three-family house, you're not, where's he going to park their scooters? Where's he going to park electric bikes or bicycles? That wasn't in the equation either. That should be something considered in the parking area.
Thank you. I'd like to call the next speaker, Ed Nikowski. At least I got one tonight.
You did, you did. Ed Nikowski, I live at 3454, he's Kai Alicon, Elkon Gisador, and most of my friends are here, neighbors. here, neighbors, uh, excuse me. So I got to agree, I hate, so I hate being the caboose up here because I have to agree with what these guys said and what they wanted to do and how they went through process with what they wanted to say. We like to be notified when things change in our neighborhood. We have a small neighborhood, I don't know if you're familiar with that area, and, um, when there's a change, if, if, if you plot your course for Elcon, we would like to know what you're going to do and how you're going to do it. I'm a retired city cop. I did 40 years as a police officer in this town and I'm basically the narc of the community. I'm always walking around, seeing things, doing things. I see things with the homeless situation, it's hard for them to, to settle in, but they do settle in our neighborhood. Now with more homes going in possibly at the Elcon, if you decide to do that, that's what I look at. And that's how I kind of run my life and my community and tell all my friends and neighbors what's going on. So, um, yeah, I've done that for such a long time, it's part of my nature now. So, um, if by chance you do plot Elcon, we'd sure like to know. We'd like to know what we can do to offset any problems you may have. And I'm all for housing, I'm all for getting people inside somewhere to stay warm, but we would like to have some type of input and if that decision has to be made, we would like that notification. I think everybody has my, my email with these guys, so however you do it, just let us know so we can give you our input. And that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the next speaker is Corky Poster.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. I'm well aware that the hour is late and that you've set this for a public hearing, so I will keep my remarks short. First, I want to, um, really thank the commission itself for all the hours you put in and was teary a little bit when Lexi talked about personal attacks on her. That's shameful and, uh, you all do great work and I'm really sorry that you have to deal with that. Uh, second, I want to commend the staff for the last two years of work, uh, on this, on this process. And in particular, I want to point out that they've been working on the margins of existing zoning. It's an overlay zone. Uh, they're not rezoning, they're not changing uses, they're just aware of the fact that housing is really hard to do. I introduce myself, I'm Corky Poster, I'm an architect and certified planner. Uh, and I do affordable housing and I do a lot of it. I've done, oh, last count, about 4,900 units over the last 50 years. Uh, so it's something I know something about. But also, I also have done some market rate housing. And the success and the feasibility of both affordable housing and market rate housing is at the margins. This notion of penciling out is real. Uh, the good example, I think, that Dan brought up of the Amazon, the project we're doing on, uh, West Miracle Mile, under the current zoning, it's not feasible. 30 units are allowed. Uh, it's punished by being one-bedroom units and density always punishes small units. Density calculations punish the small units. Um, with the CCT, we are able to design something at 58 units, which makes it feasible as a low-income housing tax credit. And all of the things that, uh, staff has done has been working at the margins, things that are not big changes. I don't quite understand why neighbors are so alarmed. Uh, there are small changes, but all of those small changes determine whether this is a real project or not, whether it's a feasible project or not. Uh, and so, uh, when you get to your public hearing, uh, I know a lot of people will stand up and say the sky is falling, nothing will ever be the same in Tucson if you pass this. Uh, but the bottom line is it's a minor change and it's a minor change that makes, uh, those 8,000 units of deficit that we have possible. Uh, last time I looked, there are almost no applications for multifamily housing, uh, in the city of Tucson because it doesn't work and these small adjustments to zoning will allow those to work. Last thing I want to say is as you head into the public hearing, I would urge you to remember who's not at the public hearing. Okay, you're going to have folks from neighbors saying, you're going to ruin my view of this, uh, you're going to change my life forever, but those 8,000 people that need housing are not going to be represented. And I know this is a big responsibility, but it's your job to represent those folks. It's your job, and as the planning department has been doing for two years, it's your job to make sure those anonymous 8,000 people who don't have a decent place to live have their interests protected in the decisions you make. Uh, I'm certain, and I've been at hundreds of these public hearings, everyone you hear will be from a nice house in a neighborhood, uh, with a nice street, uh, but you won't hear from the many, many, many people that need housing. So please keep that in mind and, uh, thanks for taking the time today. Bye.
Thank you. I'd like, now it's like to open it up to anybody else who hasn't, uh, come forth already? Anybody online? Yes, thank you, Commissioner, uh, Martin. Again, a reminder that you can send your questions to staff and speak at the public hearing that's scheduled for February 26th. Have you, 23rd or 26th? 26th, thank you. All right. Hearing none, going once, twice, three times, I would like to, uh, call item number eight, which is call to adjourn. Commissioner Martin has a question.
I just want to say that, um, been on the commission a long time and worked with a lot of commission members and I think the commission's in good hands. Really? I think the commission now is very knowledgeable compared to some commissions I was on, you know, the, um, they're more laypeople, but I think this group has, is a good group, so I think the next few years will, um, I think good things will happen, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. We are always, we're forever indebted to your service to this community. Commissioner McCantsy had something?
Oh, no, I'm waiting to adjourn.
We can adjourn. You'll be seconded.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you all.